I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting of April 10, 2023, in executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21. We are going to go into executive session. I need a motion for that.
You have to announce recording.
This meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
And, okay.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor to go into executive session. We're going to vote individually. I see Mr. Gracie is not with us this moment, but before the vote, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are going to go into executive session. We will return as close to 6:30 as possible. Thank you very much.
I was trying to watch. Oh, we're going to go. Oh, no. I have a room to do.
Not my question, but what's going on with fire? Here's my question was better than anything else in that room. Let's go back to our window.
I'd like the call to order the Select Board meeting of April 10, 2023. And this meeting is being recorded. We have one of our members is doing remote, so every is being recorded and every vote will also be done individually as opposed to a roll call vote. It will be roll call vote as opposed to as a group. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which justice is strong.
Please remain standing while we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Thanks, y'all, for coming. Okay, we have, we have signed the warrant and we are ready for appointments. Mr. McGinnis.
No recognition, reorganization.
That too, okay. Sorry. Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah.
Okay.
So another year of reorganization of the board. I've spent a lot of sleepless nights over this one. And normally the vice chair takes the chair. However, my work schedule is over the top. At my age, I'm still working five, six days a week. And I think it'd be best to have someone like my dear friend over here that's now retired and has plenty of time on his hands. And he's, he's done a fairly good job with the help of me as the vice chair. I would like to nominate Mr. Tattelbaum as the chair for next year, for this year.
I will second that nomination.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is generally something like this doesn't happen unless under certain extreme circumstances. The last time I'd have, it happened, I believe it was approximately maybe 14, 15 years ago. The circumstances at that time was a little suspect, but neither the case. I do, I do agree with Mr. Mickelson's sentiments about his work schedule and whatnot, and I would. But I also would caution our retired chairman to basically keep focus on the board. And that not to interject himself into too many situations where he becomes taxed and stretched too thin. And that he has four other members of this board to, to assist him. But we are a board, and so I will, you know, I will vote in favor of this.
Thank you.
You have to call the vote.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I personally would like to nominate Sean McDonald.
I will thank you, Frank, but I will not, I will not accept.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Is anybody else? Call or vote? We're going to vote individually. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Sure.
Sure?
Sure, sure is a yes.
Okay.
In the synonym world, it's yes.
Thank you. Close enough. Okay, and I will support myself, vote yes. Mrs. Brooks voted already. Want to vote a second time, Mrs. Brooks?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I'm all set.
Only five.
I appreciate your all this support. I do have more time than I had, and I, Mr. McDonald's message is quite clear. We are a team, and the way we, we, the business of doing business as a select board in Dartmouth, most of you are here because you think that we, we run this like a, like a mayor's office. Well, we do not. We have sometimes very limited authority, but what we can do is bring people together who have opinions about trying to solving a problem, and that's what I think our number one role is, and I will continue to try to focus in on that. And I appreciate your support and thank you very much. Okay. Next, yes, Mr. Mickelson.
There, just here. I think we need a vice chair, so I'm going to nominate Mr. McDonald to be vice chair.
And I will second that.
I'll accept.
Good boy.
Boy, okay. Any comments? We have a second. Any comments or questions from anybody on Mr. McDonald's nomination? Okay, are we prepared to vote? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, and Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations. Thank you. We'll be a good team. Okay. Are we finished?
So you just sit right there. Don't want to make you move too much.
Are we finished? We have an assistant and assistant?
We're all set.
We don't, okay.
We're all set for the meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
But we do, I know we haven't done it in the past, but I make a motion that we appoint Mr. McGinnis as secretary to the board. We have in the past, and it hasn't been done for many, many years.
Wonderful.
I will second that nomination.
Does it affect his compensation?
No.
Same workload.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion? Time to vote? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And this year votes yes. Congratulations.
We have an assistant coming soon, so we'll have time.
Okay. Are we done?
Yep.
Business of the day. Thank you all for listening in. Okay. Now, we are going to go to the appointments at 6:30. We're pretty close, so Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, we have a change of manager request for Friendly's Ice Cream at 307 State Road.
No samples.
Hello. Good evening.
Introduce yourself and let us know what's going on.
My name is Bob Baruda. I'm the president and owner of Arrow Management Group. We're franchisees of Friendly's Ice Cream. We've been with Friendly's Ice Cream for over 30 years, and the Dartmouth location, which in my previous experience with corporate ran for many years, has come up for sale, and our company has decided to purchase it in hopes of approval to take over. Nothing will change with the menu.
It'll still be Friendly's?
Everything Bill, who's our general manager, will stay in place, other than maybe a fresh paint job and so forth. That's about it.
Okay. I thought he looked familiar.
What's the number one item on the menu?
Honey barbecue melt.
Okay.
Follow closely by a Royal Vanilla split.
Washington.
Yes, very lively today.
I'd like to vote in favor of change of management of Friendly's Ice Cream Restaurant 307 State Road.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Once again, we're going to vote individually. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Congratulations. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Been there a long time.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Pledge of License, Servewell, Dartmouth. Someone here today?
I think this is, they were here before.
He already came before.
Yes.
He already came and said, I guess this is now.
Correct.
This is Joe's. He came.
This is Joe, for Joe's.
He came for sale off last week.
This is Joe's original.
This is for Joe's.
Right.
This one's for Joe's too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same thing, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, the paperwork's here.
Do we really need to continue it? I mean, it's just a pledge of license.
Yeah, same as before, so you can certainly hold on.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know.
Paperwork's the same, the names are all the same.
Yeah, it's, you know. Make a motion that we approve the, what the hell you call it?
The pledge of license.
Pledge of license.
For Joe's original.
Second.
On State Road.
Do you need to include in the motion the fact that the party's on here, just in case there's something there that we need to find? Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes for, it is unanimous. Next, 61A-29 Morton Avenue Lots 1 through 6. We have a familiar face in the crowd.
Good afternoon. Attorney Chris Markey on behalf of the Carter Real Estate Nominee Trust. This is a request to take it out of 61A land. There are six lots, single-family homes that will go on the north side of Old Westport Road in the most southerly lot of the farm that is located there. It'll extend from the most western part, go to the eastern part on Morton Ave. It keeps it address of 9029 Norton Ave right now.
Questions from the board?
No, all the committees voted in favor of not, not to have the town exercise.
All the other commissions and.
Right.
There are six, six lots, so I believe there are six.
Six times.
Purchase and sale, so there'll be six votes.
And how many homes beyond that?
One per lot.
One, so six homes total?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions?
Other than a gigantic amount of paperwork.
It is a lot of paperwork to get done.
On and on and on. Repetitious needs to say.
Yes.
And it's also gone through almost every committee in the town hall.
Everyone, everyone has agreed upon it. Yep. Motion to approve.
Hang on. We need to do these.
Don't we need to do one at a time?
So Lot 1 through 6.
So, motion to approve Lot 1.
Second. Discussion on that? Okay, let's vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes for Lot 61-1.
Motion to approve Lot 2, 61A, 29 Morton Avenue, Lot 2.
Second.
Second.
Let's vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes on Lot 2.
Motion to approve Lot 3, Morton Avenue Lot.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes for Lot 3. Next.
Motion to approve Lot 4.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes on Lot 4. 4 passes. Next.
Motion to approve Lot 5.
Second.
Let's vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Lot 5's approved. And finally?
Motion to approve Lot 6.
Second.
Okay, Mr. McDonald, let's vote.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute recess after all that. Okay. So we are done? Any other comments? Mr. Markey?
Nope. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Take care. Have a good evening.
Next, we have the planning director and chair update on warren articles and master plan. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so annually, as we have articles for a town meeting, we like to have the representatives come in to just update the board on the articles. I've asked the planning director and the chair of the planning board to come in. They have a meeting at 7 o'clock, so we tried, we made an appointment for them to come in. And Ms. O'Grady here will update the board on the articles and also master plan.
Hello, everyone. The first article is Article A, and it's on, it's an amendment to Section 375-1. And basically, what that one will do, that is with the preamble. And it speaks to the, the master plan. The master plan final draft has been completed, and the planning board has adopted the plan. So the date in that, in that first section will change from 2007 to 2023. We've also added three items to the end of that article. They have to do with the value of, with different values that the, the master plan refers to, and we've added three new ones to it. I believe that you all have a copy of it, so I won't read them unless you want me to, but I'd rather not. The Second Amendment is for Article B, and that's for Chapter 375-2 of the zoning bylaw. And that deals with the explanation and purpose of the zoning bylaw. We are not making any changes to the zoning districts. We're not changing anything with regard to the map. We are just trying to make sure that everything is up to date. We have found in going through the chapter that some of the districts were not clearly listed on either the map or in the overlay districts associated with that chapter. So this is strictly a cleanup, a cleanup item. And again, we are not making any changes to map boundaries. That being said, we are updating the map with some of the overlays. And they are also supplemented by two, two additional maps, which were done a few years ago with regard to the floodplain overlay district and the aquifer protection overlay district.
Pretty much housekeeping?
It's pretty much just all housekeeping. That's all it is. The third article, we have decided to withdraw, and we will bring that in the fall instead. That has to do with definitions and a use table. The fourth article that we are bringing forward is Chapter 375-14 of the zoning bylaw, and that is dealing with the new, with the neighborhood business district. And for that one, we are proposing some additional language to, to 375-14 point 11. We are adding the following language to the end of that, of that statement. And it is provided, comma, that no drive-through service shall be allowed as part of this use. We have gone over all of the changes with town council for all of these articles.
Dave, I have a question on that one.
Yes, go ahead.
On, on this one, does that mean that no drive-through service, unless it's already established? Or if any, if any business currently has a drive-through service in these, in this district, it would have to?
Yes, anything that would have, would have something now would be grandfathered in. So this is only for future. And they are just two small areas within the town, which are clearly visible on the zoning map.
And I don't believe there are any current drive, there are no drive-throughs in this.
In those areas? Okay.
The two neighborhood districts right now, one of them is across the street from the old town hall, which is now DCTV. And the other one is?
CV Variety.
CV Variety, okay.
CV Variety on Russell's Mills Road?
Russell's Mills, from, from that building to, I believe, the town.
The high school?
Property, the high school.
Okay. Who is that fine young man? Could you introduce yourself, please?
Kevin Mello, Plan, Chair. Thank you.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
And then the planning board is also going to bring one more article for town meeting, and that is not a zoning bylaw change. It is strictly an appropriation. And that comes as a, as a result of a surety. That was taken a few months ago for a development where the, some of the subdivision infrastructure was not completed. So DPW, we're taking it with DPW for DPW's use for that specific subdivision. It is in the amount of $451,974.09. And that is with interest by the time it comes, comes to fruition. So that is all that the planning board is bringing forward for warrant articles.
General Estates?
Yeah, oh, yes. I'm sorry, Gen Row Estates.
Exactly on Old Far River Road. Where exactly on Old Far River Road?
I don't know how to explain it other than that. It's, it's been for quite a while. The planning, the town held a surety. I know this isn't answering your question, but the town held a surety, and the surety was due to expire. It's Charles Michaels Way and a couple of other names along that area. With inflation, and even though we build contingencies in, we're not sure that all of the roads are going to be, be able to be completed by DPW. So we will see that going forward.
Not to, excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
Not to, specifically for Gen Row Estates, but what are the areas in town that the developers have built that have not come through with the final finishes per town specs that the town needs to address?
So we are still?
Because we are getting, because we are getting, I don't know if it's someone here, but we're getting sometimes some complaints regarding stormwater runoff, drainage ditches, you know, whose responsibility for, for getting to work, or, you know, the road isn't, the roads aren't done. So I, I wonder if, if between the planning and the DPW, if there's some type of catalog?
So we do have a list, and I do reach out to the treasurer's office on occasion with DPW. We do get, we do get calls. One of the ones recently has been the enclave, which I think that they are coming through to do their, to get their streets accepted. So there are a number of, of old, older, prior to any of us being, well, prior to the planning board members being on, or almost of the planning board members, and then prior to Tim and Paul taking on their positions. So there's probably about a dozen. We did have one that has come to fruition last week where they, the developer also did not comply with the, with the specifications. And we're, so we're dealing with that one now. That's another one that will be a big one. It's only a small subdivision, but the utilities weren't put in underground as they were supposed to, you know, there were occupancy permits that were, you know, there were issues with that. There were issues with the roadway not being finished, the apron coming in. So there are a number of things like that. But there's, so there's probably about a half dozen of them.
Okay, because, I mean, that's, can, Mr. McGinnis, can you work with, you know, Christine and the DPW and get us, and just get us a list of these areas?
Oh, I can, I can get him the list tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Because the other, because there's, there's a few other things that, that are out there that have always been kind of, I guess, a sore spot for some, for, for us up here. Number one is these older streets that have been in the neighborhoods for years and years and years. I mean, we're talking 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 years, that are in such disrepair that they're still private ways. And you have people living on these streets who pay the taxes, who basically have to schlup their, their trash, you know, down these roads to, to the end, so the roads can be picked up. But they have, they get absolutely no services from the town. You know, one of them, I believe, is East Wardell. You know, and because it's a paper street, or they've been built on a paper street, it seems to be one of those, seems to be a hangnail. And it's just bothersome. It, it's bothersome for them, and it's bothersome for us because we can't get the service to them because legally, we can't do anything. But yet, they're, they're paying for services that they can't get. So, I mean, we need, at some point in time, this town needs to get together and address those areas and identify those areas as to what can we do to get services to them. And, you know.
So many of those private roads that have not been accepted, where a developer or the property owners have not brought something forward, a lot of times, they were not built to town standards. So that's a big, that's a big part of the problem here. The, you know, the level of, of, of the road that was built initially by the developer. And real estate agents and the like are supposed to notify the homeowners. But a lot of homeowners don't truly understand what they're, what they're buying into. They don't really understand that, you know, the roads have not been accepted, or that the developer had no intention of ever meet, making the roads meet the standards. So I'd provide, I would ultimately provide you, I guess, with one list of those that we're still holding surety on. Surety is the money that we hold to make sure that they're accept, accepted. And those, the other part of that is, so many of those have lines of credit, or, or we're actually holding, we're holding the cash in a bank somewhere that we can keep for the long term. So those are easier to deal with. It's the ones that we're, that are no longer holding that would be a little bit more involved, and that would require more guidance from Tim on how to move forward with that.
If you could pass that list along as to, you know, I mean, because if there is monies in the line of credit or something that could be addressed that can help these people, then I'd say, let's just get it done. And you, you know.
Oh, believe me, I'd much rather see them all closed out, too. I agree.
Right. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's just ridiculous because, you know, as much as, as much as people, you know, people move into the town, they buy homes, or they move into a development, and, but people who are here, you know, see another development coming in, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, my God, what's going on? You know, the town's just taking, well, you know, there are certain rules that the town has to follow by when it develop it. But the thing is, is that I don't think, we have in the past, but I don't think we're as strong as holding the developer responsible for, when it comes time for him to close out. There have been instances where, you know, the developer just walked away, you know. And I know we, there's very little we can do about that except spend money in court to try to get something going, or just to say, to heck with it, let's just do what we need to do, and then grab his bond and do it. And if that's the case, then that's what we have to do. So.
I think it's a great suggestion. And I think the list is readily available, so we can move along on it.
Right.
I have one.
Oh, yeah, we also have two lots being held in Gen Row Estates in addition to the surety that we've taken. We can't, we, we just hold them. Again, this was one of the ones that was here before I got here. I think in talking to town council about all of that, I think, I think instead going forward, we'll obviously hold the lots like we're doing. We've got, you know, lots being held in other places as well, too. But we also need to keep in mind when we're taking a surety going forward, that in addition to building the contingency in that DPW builds in, there's got to be something for inflation because the costs have gone up so much. In the case of Gen Row Estates, we're not going to be able to even finish the development with the, all of the roads that were proposed in the development with what's being held. So that puts us in an interesting.
Couple more comments, we'll have to call it. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes. So can you identify all of these, what are it, 12 lots or so, with the actual developers? Are they still here? Are they gone? Do you have communications with all the people responsible for each of these projects?
Oh, no. We do not have communication with all of them.
Could you note that?
Yeah.
When you send that, that?
Sure.
There's no communication.
Right.
There's no contact information.
Right.
I think we need to know that.
I think if they're being held by a bank or something like that, if it's a letter of credit or funds being held, they might have something, some type of contact through that. But, yes, that would be.
I think it's important that we know.
Working with the treasurer's office.
I have a, I have a quick question regarding the master plan.
Oh, sure.
Is there a plan, or part of that plan will be, as we did with the waterways study, hub of plant study, was the, the consultant picked off some top priorities of the plan? So that we, as laymen, as opposed to you, but you could have been into the detail, that we can then look at that and maybe help us in terms of what we can help to try to get done, because they regard that as the most important issues that they are. Is that possible?
Yes. So there is a chapter within the master plan. It's called the implementation section. And I think what happens there is that they kind of assign timelines in, you know, short, short-term, midterm, long-term, those type of things. So that gives us something to work from. Everybody, at the end of the day, needs to remember that the master plan is a, is a plan, and it's, it comes about as a, as a result of a state, of a state statute. So it's 81A. And it apply, it's important because it applies, if we apply for state grant money or anything like that, we need to have the plan, and we need to have the plan updated. And I think that the, the plan, you know, it can be changed. It is very broad-based. All of your other plans support that one plan. You know, they all work in conjunction with it. So even like the open space plan or something that you're working, you know, that we're working on as well, those all kind of go into this plan. They're all referenced. So they give more specific implementation strategies that we need to move forward with.
Okay.
The planning board did at its last meeting adopt the plan. So like I said, that is prepared to be completed in March. The other part of it is, there will be a PDF up on the website. Right now, there is a link to the Starped Plan Pages for everybody to look at the draft, if, if they want to continue looking at the draft. But the planning board will be receiving it within the next couple of weeks. But the planning board will be receiving it within the next couple of weeks.
I have one more question.
Yep.
If, yep, if you have a builder or a company that you're working with that has proposed one subdivision that falls into the category that we're discussing, and they come with a proposed second subdivision, are you able to hold that second subdivision up until this one is fully completed, all paid up?
No. The subdivision regulations are clearly spelled out and that is with guidance from the state. So I have to do certain things within a certain timeframe. That way there we know, that being said, if we know that there's a developer that's been a problem in the past, we maybe can put some additional contingencies in or some things like that going forward, but yeah, no. And we're not seeing the same big subdivisions like you saw in the eighties and nineties. You know, the subdivisions now are mostly are smaller two, three lots. Yeah.
And one, one thing recently that kind of took us all by surprise, we were under the impression that when we're holding a lot in a subdivision such as Gendrow, that if they walked away from it, the town had the right to sell that property and use the proceeds. Town council is advising us opposite now. So I've been on the planning board eight years and that's the first time we've ever come to this point. And I'm kind of surprised that we, why are we holding a lot?
And why are you holding a lot?
And the bulk, these two lots that we're currently holding are on a proposed cul-de-sac off the main road. So that, what we're saying is to the DPW, with the DPW is we just won't develop that street. So the funds we have will be used to develop the street that is already developed, already has houses living on it. And those two lots are just going to linger in the background in limbo. We don't, you know, we need town council's advice on how to proceed with that because two house lots in Dartmouth are, they're probably valued at three hundred thousand each. What's going to happen with those? So in Gendrow Estates is on the south side of Old Fall River Road, right in the middle, just east of Bergeron Lane. So it's just one. You, you won't notice it as you're driving by. It's just one side street. So, but it opens up once you get into it. So.
Thank you.
As a side note, a follow-up to that, the, the owner's representative or attorney for Gendrow Estates did reach out with an email just this afternoon. So I am working with town council on that right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need to vote, do we?
Not for this, but you should vote to adopt the master plan. The planning board has already, but.
We need to vote on that tonight.
You don't have to vote tonight, but it needs to be voted on eventually.
Okay. Well, more pure evid, more pure evidence of what the details are required if you're on the planning board or the director because it's an amazing amount of information. So thank you for what you do.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I don't think I could last ten minutes on that meeting. Okay. Are we ready? Next, secondhand goods application renewals. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, these are two annual renewals for ATM machines, one inside the Dartmouth Mall and one inside of Walmart. We generally don't ask that the applicants come in. It's been an annual approval.
These are ATMs?
ATMs and it comes under secondhand goods, yard sales, junk dealers or antiques?
Yes.
How'd that happen?
Who knew?
It's kind of fitting.
It's kind of fitting money, obviously.
I wonder they start charging such crazy rates for these things? These, these are those private ATMs, right?
Yeah.
Charges an enormous stupid amount of money.
Percentage.
Yeah, dumbass things.
They go right in your pocket for the machine.
Motion, motion to approve.
We can vote on both together?
Ah, yes.
Okay. A second?
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments? Keep it clean.
Nobody wants to use them. All right.
Okay. We ready to vote?
Be aware.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Something they will understand what it's all about. Okay. Uh, next, to be town forest cleanup request. Who's here? Please introduce yourself.
John Tomoski.
Stick right into the microphone, okay?
John Tomoski, South Coast Nembah. It's a mountain bike association. Got other, other people that are part of that group as well. So that's Doug Roscoe. He's one of our prominent riders of the community.
Mic up further. There you go.
Right up to you.
Yeah. So you know Doug Roscoe, Kurt, he's the vice president and his wife is the treasurer. So basically what we're looking to do is refurbish the trail system that's in the south end of the town forest and make it ridable and manageable and clean because right now it's kind of in a state of disarray. The sign was to the point where you couldn't read it, so I had to go clear it out so you can actually find that it was there. So there is parking on the west side of the town forest. On the east side, there is a, there's an agreement with the electric company for an easement, I believe, for access to it legally. So what we're also looking to do in the second phase of, if the work is allowed, is to open up a trail that would join the west section to the east section so that you don't need that easement to get onto the town property because all of the town property comes from the west to the east. So most of the riding area right now is on the east because that's where the, the high elevation is, where there's no drain, where there's no wetland. And that's where naturally all the trails were built. So to get there, there's two ways to get in. There's the easement from the electric company and then there's the, the town lot, which is, I believe, on Deerfield Road. So what we're basically looking to do is to clean it up, make the trails usable again to more than just the expert riders and maybe open up some new trails and talk about it with the town.
I do have, I do have one question. Right ahead. Came up with the names of these trails?
Oh, that was me.
Oh, that was you?
Did you look at them?
Yes, I saw them.
Okay. Well, I mean.
I mean, I, to be perfectly honest with you, I would have guessed Doug would have came up with these names.
You'll get wasted.
It's kind of like.
It's, you've got to pick a random subject and just go with it.
He did.
It's very random. I mean, Barfolumiu?
Well, Spaceballs references, you know.
Dot Matrix, Yogurt.
Yeah.
Gone to Plaid.
Yep.
They've gone to Plaid.
So the Gone to Plaid is because you're going very fast on it. So you're going almost, you know, light speed.
When will Ven be now?
Meaning to it.
Lone Star, Vespa.
The characters.
It's, yes, I know.
So as we build more trails, we'll have more names to pick from.
Do you volunteer? We can put our names.
Oh, I, I just, I just wondered how they, how the names came up. It was just.
A little random.
Yeah, but just, yeah, very random.
I do have a question. Where do you park for the trails that are about one ninety-five?
So the ones that are.
Can't tell from your map like where it starts.
So the ones that are right next to one ninety-five, they're not legal. So what we're trying to do is get people away from there.
Okay.
That one trail is what a lot of people do take to get there because it's around the wetland. So that's really the only safe way to get to these trails. Because to the southwest, actually to, I mean, I have a map that shows it. Basically there's a private parcel right smack in the middle of town land. And so what the plan is to essentially take the lot that you have on Deerfield, build a trail that avoids all the wetland, sneaks just under that private parcel and joins you to those trail systems.
So is that that dotted line off of Barfolumiu?
So the red with the yellow, do you have that version of it? I can, I can bring it up there if you need it.
Green, blue.
I have, I see a red dotted line from Barfolumiu to?
Lone Star.
Lone Star.
I'm gonna, see, I don't have signal, so I wouldn't be able to pull it up. I can bring this map up there. I can show you. That's all right.
It's okay, but that's the trail you're talking about?
So basically, so if, do you, does it show the wetland on that map as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. So essentially what it does, it comes from the northwest, goes southeast, goes east, cuts south at one point, then goes east again, then cuts up to the northeast and that avoids all the wetland.
Okay.
There is one section of wetland that we would probably have to build a bridge for. But the good news is we are literally in the process of building a seventy-five yard bridge in Freetown. And that's a pretty big bridge. So this one would be similar to that bridge.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know the exact length. We'd have to, you know, work with conservation commission on that, but that's phase two. That's, you know, that's to avoid the access from the east side.
So the parking, the P in a circle at the end of Dot Matrix, what is that street?
So the, the parking, oh, so that's Deerfield.
That's Deerfield.
Yeah. So Deerfield basically has like a, I don't know what to call it. It's almost like a, I don't know if it's a gas line or electric line that is at the end of, of Deerfield. You know where I'm talking about? That has a trail kind of in it.
Okay.
And then just to the end, it cuts in into the woods along town property and it gets a little wet there, but that's one way in. But the other way in is actually a little further west on Deerfield. There's another trail which is that, I don't know if it's, it's one of those silly names, but it's a lot drier than the other one. So there's two ways in. And if you look at that property to the west, which is essentially to the south of Deerfield Road, wherever there's dry land, that's prime land for building dry trails. And there's just one trail that we found in there that was probably built thirty, forty years ago and just never really ridden. So it would be nice to just fix that up and build around that where people can ride.
And it was mentioned what you're going to use for signage?
So I'm open to that because right now what I did just to let people know of the main loop is I used a environmental friendly paint, uh, which is just marking like a blue for the blue trail and then a green for a green trail. There's like two main trails in there right now. So I just marked them with blue and red. So if you go in right now, there's like a section of paint on a tree at about eye height when you're riding a bike. So you know where you are. So you don't get lost.
So I'm envisioning this as a non-motorized bike trails? Or will they also be motorized bike trails?
So that's, that's the joy of it. With mountain bikes, we tend to share trails with dirt bikes and ATVs. When you get towards residential areas, obviously we try to work with the town to, to make everybody happy. But sometimes you just, you can't really stop the people that don't care about the laws.
Right.
So we're, we're here because we care about the laws and we want to follow the rules and build the trails to the town standards.
Uh, one, two, couple of questions. One is to clean up the existing trails, is it timeframe?
Uh, so I mean, they're, in, from my opinion, they're not in bad shape, but for most people's opinion, they're probably in pretty rough shape. So I would say maybe a couple sessions of going in there with a handful of people and, and the main trail system that's there. And it's not very big.
Will people be walking these trails at all?
I would think after we fix them up, people would probably want to, yeah. And you can because just look at Destruction Brook. We ride mountain bikes in there.
Yeah.
And we know there's walkers, so we don't go super fast.
There's horses in there, I think, sometimes too.
Yeah. So I don't think you're going to have horses and people going on that, you know.
Right. Yeah.
That Plaid trail.
Agreed. But so a model of what we could anticipate would be something like Destruction Brook's with the kind of versatility it has there.
So basically if you, if you picture Destruction Brook and then you picture the trails that are in Freetown, which are a lot more rocky and, you know, just kind of more advanced, it's right in between. It's, it's just, it's like a cousin of them. It's crazy. So that's why we're so interested in building the trails in there or expanding the trails in there is because it's such prime land for it and it's just not used right now.
It's obviously you have a great understanding, knowledge and experience on how to do this and good idea to get Professor Roscoe involved too because he'll give you some mojo.
Yeah. So like I said, right now we're in the process of, we just got approval from the conservation commission in Freetown to build a seventy-five foot, seventy-five yard bridge in a very wet section of Freetown. So it would essentially be the same thing we would ultimately do in phase two in that wetland.
You'd go through conservation here the same way?
I would do the same thing. I would go through WPA forums and, uh.
How much of the work you'll be doing is going to need some kind of approval from the town?
Uh, so only, so I think the only, so what we're talking about at this meeting, I think, is just the maintenance plan to work on it, to be given permission to maintain the trail system as an organization with volunteer work that, that we can do tomorrow. And then phase two would just be if we have the permission to do it, ultimately after we, you know, check out the wetland and, and, you know, I'd like to go out there with somebody from the town to look at it, obviously. And then we can come up with a plan of what, based on what we did in Freetown or are doing in Freetown, the same thing. And the bridges themselves are designed by, believe it or not, dirt bike riders.
Did you go through your office, Jim?
Well, if you look though in, in what we have tonight, we have something, we have some information from Mark Garrett, which says, while, while I am the con con, con con, do not object to the concept, these are town owned lands requiring the town to be held harmless by all of the workers and some joint venture of the same. This will probably require town council involvement. My recommendation is to bring this to town administrator for his advice on how to proceed. This might also require approval from the select board.
We have a waiver that we usually have people sign that we can provide.
We have one as well, but we could use yours.
I think having the town waiver because you're on town property would be important, but I also think that, I think it would be nice to have, an opportunity to have trail markers with the.
We can come up with new names if you want.
With the names. I don't get, use these names. I'm looking at the bigger one and I, I like, I like the big long one that says, I didn't plan this or.
This was not my idea.
It was not my idea.
I, I put that there because it's not technically legal.
Right. So I liked that one. Not my idea.
Okay.
But I think it's helpful only because if someone is injured, they can communicate where they are, on which trail.
Yeah.
So.
So that trail that you're referring to does, I, I did at one point try to prevent people from going through there. But the issue with that is you have some people that take signs down.
Right. And as soon as you say, don't do it.
They're going to do it.
I want to do it even more.
Yeah.
Well, not me personally, but others.
Yeah.
But I think, because you're doing this at, at your cost. You're asking us for nothing else. The thing I think that we should support is appropriate signage.
Yeah. I mean.
That it's managed by the, by the pathways committee. I think we can, we should do that.
In a kiosk or something. A kiosk.
There really are no.
This is where you park and this is?
There really are no advanced trails in there. Just so you know, there's no, from my, I mean, I've been riding mountain bikes and I mean, Doug's more advanced than I am, but I think he would agree that none of these trails are advanced. So the risk is, is very low compared to some of the trails you ride in other systems in the area. It's more of an intermediate area, I would call it. Um, once you've graduated from the Destruction Brook trails, you can now go to town forest. And then once you've graduated from town forest, then you can go to the Rock Gardens of Freetown.
I, I think that this is incredibly exciting in the fact that you're providing us with not only expertise, but a team to get it done. And I know that all of us, you hear the skepticism like, well, is he going to, is he going to follow the rules? And I think that bringing along someone like Doug to, and I know you will, but to make sure we, we don't want to do something that we end up saying we should, we didn't do it the right way and we got to go back and do it. And I think you have a complete understanding of that too, which is great.
The land being private right in the middle was my biggest concern, but we looked at wetland and we found a way using town property to get around it. So we just have to, we have to stake it and make sure we're using the right, right areas and we'll be fine.
Call on us when you, when the time's right and we will sort out the right committees and whatever we can do and help with the signage and all. So we want to help you out too.
So as far as working on the existing trails that are there, could we clean them up now or do we need to wait on that or?
Uh, we'll get you the waiver. I'll email you the waiver. And then once you have that signed by the people riding the cleanup, it'll be good to go.
So we'll probably, like I said, multiple cleanups, but I'll just, just send you the waivers once we're doing them?
Yes.
Great. Wonderful. You've got a great team over there. Thank you. So anybody have any questions, comments? We have to vote on this, I don't think.
Uh, I would vote to allow them to clean up.
We should vote on this.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve the work proposed on the town forests and that, that the, the parties involved sign a waiver as provided by our, the select vote office.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Let's vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, unanimous. Thank you so much for what you've done for our association.
Appreciate it.
Look forward to taking a look at it.
Thank you.
Ride my car through the trail maybe, huh?
No.
Not enough. I guess not. Okay. Okay, next. Spring annual town meeting warrant item list. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes. So annually, as we prepare the town warrant, I come before the board to just go over the list of what we're proposing or expecting to be the warrant articles. I don't have the wording yet, but I just want to update the board on the, the list. So I'll go through it relatively quickly. It's a, a larger warrant than in years past. So I think we're coming out of COVID. So first is, there's three community preservation committee articles. One is their administrative budget. It's housekeeping. Two is their proposed funding of the Mendes Montero housing project. They're allocating five hundred thousand dollars to this project. Uh, third is the transfer of the town pound to the park board.
Thank goodness.
Wow. Took a long time.
And, uh.
Relief.
Next, uh, are just some.
That's located on, um, Russell's Mills Road somehow. I just have a quick question. The community preservation, um, what kind of funds do they have?
Buddy Baker Smith is usually here. He, uh, had a previous commitment tonight, so he's gonna be here on the twenty-fourth, so he can answer questions on the articles.
Cemetery.
Article number four, uh, this is the annual appropriation for the cemetery sale of lot funds. Uh, next is the, uh, establish of the FY twenty-four maximum spending budget for revolving funds. This is related to Park and Recreation to fund the, the bucket and their programming. Uh, acceptance of the Capital Planning Committee report for FY twenty-four. Uh, appropriation for collective bargaining agreements. This is, uh, we had it, we're not sure we're gonna have all the current contracts settled. Uh, we're getting close. Uh, if we do not, we will need to appropriate, uh, funding for FY twenty-three for collective bargaining. So this article is in there. Uh, next is the salary and stipends of elected officials. Uh, after that is the Schedule A, which is the FY twenty-four budget appropriation for, um, the, the whole budget. Uh, the next are funding SOAR and subject system betterments. Uh, and then we have the enterprise funding, uh, solid waste, water department, SOAR, uh, DCTV and the Waterways Management Enterprise Funds. Uh, next is the personnel bylaw amendments for new positions and salary adjustments. This is generally hourly rates for part-time and seasonal staff to, uh, adjust for, um, minimum wage?
Lifeguards.
Lifeguards, yes, are on that list. Uh, this one's, I think, being removed. We don't need this appropriation of the stabilization fund. That, uh, is not gonna be on there. Uh, next is appropriation of the stabilization fund for collective bargaining and non-union personnel agreements. This is for, I'm sorry, I get this one confused with, uh, number seven. So this is for contracts that have not been settled. Number seven is for contracts, uh, article number seven is for contracts that have been settled, where we have to pull from the stabilization fund. Number twenty, annual appropriation to the stabilization fund for opioid illegal settlement receipts approval. This, uh, uh, town meeting needs to vote to, uh, accept the money that we've received the checks for. Oh, and, uh, appropriations in the stabilization fund for opioid illegal settlement receipts. That's for the current funding. Uh, the next article is, uh, the legislature had changed the, uh, opioid receipts funding mechanism. So now the town meeting can vote, uh, one time to, uh, appropriate all stabilization funds from the opioid legal settlement receipts to, uh, the appropriate stabilization fund in town. So people, town meeting doesn't have to vote annually for this purpose.
Okay.
I made that very long and confusing for something very simple. Um, next, you saw the planning director was in here with the chair to talk about the three, uh, planning articles, zoning bylaw, the preamble amendment, explanation of the purpose and purpose amendment, uh, neighborhood business districts amendment. Uh, we will have a general bylaw, uh, amendment to the wetland bylaw. Um, our town council, Brian Cruz, is working with, uh, our, uh, environmental affairs coordinator on this. So we anticipate this will be on there and may not. Uh, the board had proposed the charter amendment for the library trustees to reduce the number from six to five. That is on here. Uh, the gender estates surety appropriation, uh, we have that listed under Board of Public Works, but it's also the planning board. Uh, we have the donation bin bylaw that the board wanted to revisit again. Uh, Brian Cruz, our town council, is here to explain that. That is coming up, uh, the next item on the agenda. And then we have two resident petitions. Uh, one is for an appropriation from the reserve fund for legal counsel, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and the second is, uh, request to grant a beer and wine license for DeVal's general store. This is for sale of beer and wine. Uh, the town has a limited number of liquor store licenses, uh, it has an unlimited number of restaurant liquor licenses, but this would be for, uh, selling beer and wine.
This is for beer and wine, not all alcohol?
Oh, I, right now they serve beer and wine, but you cannot buy it to take it off property.
Correct.
Like in their refrigeration thing. They wanna have a retail license.
But not all alcohol?
No alcohol. Doesn't, doesn't mention it.
We'll see the wording coming up in their article. It's very broad.
Very confusing.
So, it can't be broad.
In order for the town to exceed its licenses, it has to be approved by its legislative body?
Yes.
Okay.
For the sale of beer and wine?
Right.
Yes.
Right.
But not for the restaurant?
My impression is the town's added, and I know we have a further discussion, but it's added many places where you can go in a convenience store, a gas station and buy beer and wine, retail. But not alcohol, not alcohol. Uh, that's why I thought that they wanted to sell all alcohol there.
It's not what it says though.
I know.
Yes.
It's confusing to me.
So with, with, with citizen petition articles, we have to present what is presented in the citizen petition. We can't change any of the wording or adjust the wording. This is what they've presented, so it needs to be presented to town.
It says a retail beer and wine license. Period.
Well, how long do they have to make sure they are asking for what they're actually looking for before it's gonna become, they don't have much time.
Well, my thing is that this is what all these people signed for.
Yes.
And they have pages of people's.
Beer and wine?
They got almost a hundred, uh.
They've over.
Yeah, more than, more than a hundred.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure that's.
So.
So, so to get a beer and line, a beer and wine license for retail, um, it's, we, we have to approve those. But why are we, all those convenience stores that's, that are selling beer and wine, we didn't have to do this for beer and wine?
This is because we, we had reached our maximum allotment of licenses.
All those we've added, we've added a lot. Whatever.
No, it's not. Some people, some people have gone out of business, but we were able to add years ago.
Beer and wine.
A significant number of licenses, but now we've reached the limit.
Okay.
And because there's no more establishments in the town that can sell beer and wine unless somebody stops.
Okay.
And then that license would be available. So what this does is this now adds a license. Now, the question is, the question is that if this license becomes, if this license becomes approved at town meeting, does this now, does the renewal have to be approved by town meeting because it's an ex, it's, it's in a, it is in excess of what the town limitations have?
Attorney Savasano might be able to answer that.
I see.
I see.
Anthony, or I should say, let me, let me, let me make this, let me make this professional. Uh, Attorney Savastano, um, you've heard my question.
Yeah. What's your answer, Anthony? I have a number of concerns about this warrant article. It, it's, it's not legal as drafted. First of all, they can't, town meeting can't tell you who to issue a liquor license to. I gave them a form article where we added, a number of years ago, um, we've, we convinced the ABCC that Dartmouth, because of its unique situations with seasonal licenses and a lot of things.
Anthony.
What volume?
You can't hear me? Okay, I'm sorry. I said, a, a num, a number of years ago, um, we used to apply, do town meeting articles for liquor licenses for restaurants until, um, we were able to convince the ABCC that under a odd section of the law, we're actually entitled to unlimited liquor licenses for restaurants. Um, so, but we did have a warrant article, which I shared with, I thought it was the attorney for the, um, store. And I said, use this form article. If, you need to change the statutory reference because you're asking for a retail license, not a restaurant license. Instead, this came back to us. They can only ask for town meeting to petition
Thank you.
for a special act to add an additional beer and wine license. They cannot ask the legislature to grant it to a particular person. So the fact that it says the name of the company in itself means the warrant article is out of order. Uh, second, it doesn't ask for a petition for a, um, special act to add an additional liquor license to Dartmouth or wine and beer license to Dartmouth. That's how it should have read. So it looks like at some point, maybe their attorney was taken out of the loop, cause this doesn't look like it was written by an attorney. Uh, so, I mean, there were a number of problems with the way the warrant article was written.
Sounds like the talks, the clock's ticking to get this straightened out, cause town means.
Well, the problem is we can't undo it because unless the petitioners ask that it be taken off, we have to put the article in as drafted.
No, no, I'm saying from them, not from us, from, from the petitioners. Okay. They're gonna end up not getting what they're looking for.
Well, the other issue is, uh, when time comes to renew, you have to go to town meeting every year to renew it, not through the select?
No, no. If somebody wants to have an additional liquor license beyond that, that's allowed by, by the law, they would, they would have to, town meeting would have to vote to submit a, a special act to add a particular additional wine and beer license. But that is not for a specified holder of the license. It's just to allow the select board to issue an additional license. They can't. The select board is the one that issues the licenses. So, and even if this warrant article were to pass, if it were, if it had been drafted correctly and it passed and there was a special act, um, that was approved, giving an additional beer and wine license, that does not direct the select board to give it to any particular party or any particular company.
Correct. So it'll be a license.
So you're prerogative whether or not you give a beer and wine license, even if you have the ability to give an additional one.
So town meeting could.
At most they could do is ask for this special act to grant the select board the authority to give an additional beer and wine license. And then they have to come to you and say, we want it. But other people can come to you and say, we want it as well.
Exactly. Yeah. So.
Okay, we'll leave it up to petition again. Okay, um, Mr. McGinnis, we.
So those are the articles. Um, the, the next item on the warrant was the Community Preservation Committee, uh, Buddy Baker Smith, but he will be here on the twenty-fourth.
I have a question on the reserve fund for legal counsel.
That's another petition, citizen petition.
Citizen petition. It's not specific as to a type of legal counsel?
Outside.
Above or beyond?
Outside legal counsel. I, I would assume if you're gonna, if you, if the article is asking for, um, funds to hire legal counsel regarding the changes of DEP Title V regulations and the watershed permit, that you would wanna hire an attorney that is, um, well-versed.
In that area.
That area. Yes. I mean, I wouldn't hire somebody who, you know, does wills to do this work, that's for sure. I mean, they may do wills, but they better, you know. Whoever, if this does get passed and if we do engage an attorney, he, that attorney better know what they're doing in Title V and have a good track record in.
And they only have two hundred thousand dollars to do it in.
Well, that's.
We're, we're gonna have a further discussion on this.
I hate to tell, I hate to tell any attorney what the limit is in spending.
With the petitioned articles.
Cause then they know.
The board has the option to ask the representatives to come in and explain the articles. It's.
Not too good.
If you need more information or detail.
Yeah.
So what is the board, what is our position on that one?
Nothing right now. It was just, we're just being, Mr. McGinnis is just notifying us.
Right. He said if we felt we needed more information.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's pretty spelled out. I don't know if we need, feel we need to have the.
If we're gonna be discussing the articles, then the, the petitioner, or at least the presenter or the petitioner should be here to discuss, you know, why they, and the reasoning behind it.
I would like to make sure we have a discussion on this article. And when we do, of course, anybody who wants to come, including the petitioner, make sure they're here, invite them.
Well, I would prefer the, the person.
Well, no, given the opportunity.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'll ask them to attend on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah. Okay. Enough said on this. Anybody else? Ready to move on to updated donation bin bylaw review?
Uh, yes. So, uh, a few months ago, the board had asked to revisit the donation bin, uh, bylaw, the proposed bylaw for the upcoming town meeting. Uh, Attorney Cruz, uh, has prepared a red line draft, taking into account, uh, some of the comments made, uh, previously at town meeting and, uh, by other members of the community in regard to the name, donation bin bylaw. And, uh, it's in the packet for the board to review and Attorney Cruz is present to answer any questions or further discussion.
Well, I'll start because my first, um, donation bin bylaw reading, my concern was that this mandates that all donation bins are nonprofit. And the school department has entered an agreement with a for-profit company. And when I pursued, um, discussion with the school committee, I mean, with Jim Kylie, the chief financial officer, the, um, school department receives about twelve thousand dollars a year from the bin, um, the bin base date recycling. Um, and it wasn't something that they wanted to give up. They feel that they're, they have a need for that twelve thousand dollars. And again, this bylaw would eliminate that relationship.
So as, as revised, the requirement that there be a nonprofit component to the owner of the bin has been eliminated. If you look in your red line version, you can see that section two twenty-one dash two, paragraph A one has been deleted. And that was the reference to there being a nonprofit.
Number one says only nonprofit.
Yes. So that has, that has been eliminated in the redlining of the draft.
Oh, I don't have that.
We don't have that.
We have the original with a bunch of.
We, yeah, we have some, it looks like purple writing.
Oh, yeah, that's the red line. I don't know if that's been, the version that I provided them, Brian, I'm not sure if that's on, on there. That, that is still.
Any, anything that's in different text, that, and different colored text then, if it's crossed out, it's no longer in the bylaw.
Right. But here, number one, only nonprofit corporate entities that have registered with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts may be granted a license for a donation bin, is not crossed out.
So we'll make sure that gets updated.
So, so the, the version that you should have, that should be crossed out.
Can we, all right, in order to save time, save face, save sanity, can we discuss this on the twenty-fourth with the upgraded version that will be presented at town meeting instead of the old version, redlined?
All right, how do you see the, I didn't know if the board wanted to see the changes, but we can just provide the updated version.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean.
I'd like to see the changes.
But the first change, the first change is still here. And this doesn't, I mean, the only nonprofit still exists. It's not redlined, it's not highlighted, it's not anything. It's there. That means that's part of the bylaw, proposed bylaw, excuse me. The other thing too, and maybe, maybe this is also is the, the requirement regarding security cameras.
Right. We agree with that.
So ever, ever, all that is deleted.
Okay.
So, yeah, hold on.
So then let's just move on. Wait till we get the, the actual version that's gonna go before town meeting so that we can review it, take a look at it, and then just comment on that.
Hundred percent agree.
Okay.
So I, I think that, I think what's happened up till this moment, and we'll leave it at that, is that it's a worthy, great item to do and enforce, but not to the point where it's so long and so unenforceable. It was what we agreed on last time, that, uh, we wanna make it a document that actually works. And we can't enforce because it doesn't have so much detail. But we don't know that now until we, uh, until we see that finished.
Correct.
Okay. Is that good for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Brian?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Yeah, no worries. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Anthony already left. Why don't you even say goodbye to Anthony?
Well, get him off the clock.
Uh, okay, next. We're moving right along. Everybody okay?
Yep.
Citizen, um, petitioned warrant articles?
Uh, yes. So the board is seeing the two articles. You know, one of the question was, one of the questions I was gonna ask is, do you want, uh, representatives to come to the twenty-fourth meeting?
Yes.
Uh, so you made that clear. So I'll invite them to the twenty-fourth meeting.
Next would be the Assistant Harbor Master Contract.
Uh, yes. This is, uh, the proposed contract for the Assistant Harbor Master, Rob Miller, for, uh, the three-year contract, uh, which is in the board's packet for approval.
Do you wanna go over the, uh, compensation?
Oh, do you want me to go over it? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Yes, so hold on one second.
I, I, I have it here, Sean, if you want.
I have it here also.
Yeah. Year one, which begins, which begins April fourth, twenty twenty-three, is at twenty-eight dollars and twelve cents per hour. Year two is at twenty-eight sixty-eight. Year three is twenty-nine twenty-five. The contract will run from April fourth, twenty twenty-three to April third, twenty twenty-six.
That represents a two percent increase.
Yes.
Each of the three years.
And he also has the ability to increase his rate if he receives his captain's license, uh, studies and captain's licenses, United States Merchant Mariner Captain's credentials, which that increase will be a dollar fifty above his existing rate.
Any more questions? Any more questions or comments? I need a motion.
Some moves.
Second, anybody second?
Second.
Second, okay. Now, any questions or comments regard to the assistant harbor masters' contract? Let's vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next, the select board future meeting schedule approval.
I had a couple of dates that I know I won't be able to attend, so I just wanted that to be noted, so that we can make sure we still have a.
Let's see if we have any options. What, what dates you're talking about?
July 31st. I know I will be out of town and I won't be able to join remotely. So as long as everybody else can.
We're having three meetings that month, and I think the problem in July is always an issue, July and August, if people are on vacation.
Yeah, but we have three meetings that month.
Right, so, yeah.
And then December 18th, I will also be away and unavailable.
Yeah, that's. Meeting sometimes is, shall we say, fragile.
Yeah.
Do you agree with that?
If it's any later than the 18th, I'm not, I'll be gone.
No, we can't do it late than 18th.
I just wanna make sure if anyone else had, knew of plans.
I have, at this point in time, I, I don't plan that far.
Well, next week, Sean, you gonna be okay with?
I have no idea what I'm doing next week.
Okay.
Except for Thursday night, I do know what I'm doing.
Okay.
I have a meeting.
I think the, we are, we are scheduled here for only one meeting in the month of September, but that basically due to Mr. McGinnis being away and, and the church holidays for us. So we'll make do, and maybe we can make an adjustment down there, we'll see how it goes, but.
25th is Yom Kippur, right? Yeah.
So you'll send us an update?
We didn't change anything.
I think these will work, as long as nobody else is away.
No, I'm just saying.
Well, it's also possible that we may get close to that July, and we may not wanna have three meetings in a month as well.
I mean, if, I mean, everything is fluid. This is just, it's a fluid schedule. The only time, the only time it becomes solid is when it's posted.
I think come July, we'll take a look at that and decide whether we can.
I know, it's got my birthday off.
Change your vacation? Okay, no, it's okay.
I just don't take it.
Okay, oh, okay, even better.
And I know we're not meeting on my birthday, so.
Okay.
On whose birthday?
Mine.
Oh.
Okay.
Federal holiday on that.
Discussion of, oh, set to move on?
Yes.
Very good. Question, Mr. Gracie, all set with the schedule?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion of Town and Fire District's Working Committee draft for future fire workshop meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the, on the letter sent in by the Fire District Chiefs, I wholeheartedly agree with it.
I also do.
I think, I think this is, I think their, their suggestion is something that we should take up, and I believe this is a good thing. And we wanna keep it.
Nicely crafted.
Yes, and nice, nice and tight, and that it's not spread out so that it loses focus. And I think, and I think the opportunity to do wonderful things is presented itself in the form of this committee, as suggested. So I would like to make a motion that we form a working group that consists of all fire, of the three Fire District Chiefs, the town administrator or his designee, and a member of this board.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Second?
I will second that.
Okay, discussion. Not knowing who on this board is interested in serving, we haven't had that discussion. I too want to commend especially Chief of District One, who put the letter together for us, represented, made it very clear, and he responded almost immediately. They, they take, they're taking this seriously, and I think it has, has some major potential for things that have not happened here before. In that interest, I wonder if we could consider, I don't, in regards to this board's representation, because we are not going to, the finance part is out, et cetera, that we consider having two members on this, because I think it's, this is a big town issue, and I think that there's a lot of diverse opinions about how to craft the agenda and mission statement, and how to stick with it, and I would, I would like to consider that, no matter who the two members are, because I think it's, I don't wanna lose the momentum nor the, the potential for this, and I think it's a, it's a giant town-wide issue. And I, I think that select board involvement is, is even more critical than just one.
What do the other members say? Increasing the membership from one select board member to two?
Obviously, it'd be a request, because.
I know it's a request, not to the chair.
From, to the fire districts as well.
I think it'd be a good idea because of, we do have three districts, so I think two members of the select board would, would bring another, another set of eyes, hopefully work well with the, the other, the other people on the, on the committee. So I would say two select board members.
Any objection?
I feel I'm overcommitted with a couple of the committees that I'm all, already on, so I won't.
I'll volunteer to be one of them.
I, I won't step up, so I don't wanna put pressure on the rest of the team.
I'll volunteer to be one of the select board members.
Frank, would you be interested?
Depends when the meetings are and that sort of thing, but yes.
Meetings will be, town hall, maybe even in the districts, I would think they'd be moving meetings to see, maybe, my vision would be in, in the districts for different meetings, especially when you talk about the districts themselves, and maybe here, but there would be in-house live meetings, I think, Frank, if that's the question.
No, I'm more concerned about what time they, some of these are places that have very early meetings, which are a problem for me.
Uh, no, and the, well, I think they're gonna probably steer the time, though.
Well, I mean.
Well, they're full-time employees.
They're full-time employees, so that.
During their workday.
During work hour meetings would, wouldn't be, I don't think, too much of a problem, you know?
Let me tentatively say yes, and let's see what unfolds.
Yeah, let's get Frank involved and see where it goes. If Frank can't do it, then, you know, I'll, I'll step in. If Frank, I would, I'm gonna amend my motion that we include two members of the select board.
I, I personally have interest myself, but I'll, I think if Frank's willing to take it on.
Stanley jumped, Stanley jumped in and took your spot.
I understand, it's okay.
But let's put it this way, if, if, if Frank, I mean, this is, this is how we don't wanna see you stretch too thin, David, okay? David, you got a lot on your plate right now, okay? You got the harbors, you got the harbor, you got the open space, you got the master plan, you know?
And a recent illness that is stress-induced.
Let's, you know, 'cause there'll be something coming along, you know, probably within several months, that's gonna require you to do something.
This won't happen, I, I don't think it'll happen for quite a few.
Right, but, I mean, it's, I would, I'll make the motion, I'll amend my motion to include two members of this board on the committee, and those two members would be Stanley and Frank, if Frank is capable. If Frank cannot do it, and Frank determines that he cannot do it, then we'll decide between you and me.
Okay.
We'll have a boxing match.
I'll second that.
I'm a pacifist.
I know you are. Come by here.
And that being said, I think that our meeting that we had, our last meeting where they attended, it was a great meeting, because I live in one district, have worked in a, a different district, and knew just pieces of what's going on in the fire department, and, you know, would like to publicly say again, they need more folks to be interested in being firefighters, particularly Fire District Three. But all fire districts, I'm sure, could use additional help, so those of you willing and able to participate, please call your local fire station. That's one piece. And the second piece is to help Fire District Three, I hope that one of the things that this committee looks at is the state-owned properties, both the university and the correctional facility, that when called, does not receive any state reimbursements, that that can be something, just to make the state aware of the burden it puts on the taxpayers of.
I, I just, I'd just like to clarify my position. Yeah, whether I'm on this committee or not is, is not important to me. This is, they, there's skepticism, and why would there be, from the, from the, from the districts, because this has never been done before. And what they need to do is trust that we understand that process, and this is a fantastic opportunity to try to do something, whatever it might be, with our preconceived notions is to make our, our fire districts even that much more effective in our town, even more, more improved in that regard. We need to vote?
Yes, the motion, there is a motion.
There is a motion, and is the motion, has it been seconded?
Yes, it has, yeah.
Okay, let's vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yep.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes unanimously. And once again, we really respect and thank the districts for being here, a very productive meeting with a great attitude, and we, we're really excited to be working with you in this regard. We'll maybe be making contact with them at that time. Okay, thank you. Are we ready for the town administrator's update? Moving right along.
Yes, so just have a few items. Under DPW, the, they are getting ready to start their replacement or upgrading of water meters to the automated meter reading system. They have posted a video that I urge all residents to review, it's a very professionally-made video describing the process that the water department will be going through to replace the video, or their vendor will be going through to replace their meters, starting this summer, so it's a great video, we're trying to get the word out, so it's also on our website. Just smaller items in DPW, there's no trash collection, collection on, or recycling on April 17th, that's Patriots Day. And the water department has issued a memo that they will begin flushing water mains throughout town from April 26th to May 27th. You can see the water department website for details on that. Under procurement, the broadband study request for qualifications, the, the rebish issue that was done, we received four responses. The broadband committee is gonna start reviewing those responses and present something to the board, hopefully later in April or early May. Also, their Massachusetts Broadband Institute is funding a digital equity, is funding digital equity fellows to support community broadband initiatives. This is something to help other communities in looking at alternative ways to provide broadband internet access, so the, the state is working on that as well. The pickleball court, construction bids for the North Regional Park and also for Russell's Mills Road down by the Friendly Pizza came in, and the bids were well below what we had estimated for the cost, so that was exciting. So this is one of those items where this is funded through ARPA funding, but this leaves more funding for, to fund other ARPA projects in the future, so we'll be presenting.
It's gherkin ball now. Because it's a smaller amount, it's gherkin ball instead of.
It's wood chips, it's supposed to.
When are they gonna start?
Pretty soon, actually, yes, so I think they'll start probably late April, early May.
Kirkens?
Old guys in shorts.
Under energy, the town's community electricity aggregation program is up for rebid, and that'll be done May 2nd. As you know, Dartmouth's part of a 25-community municipality buying group, it's been very successful for the town of Dartmouth. Since it's been in place since 2016, they've calculated it's saved residents and businesses in town over $12 million. So it's a very successful program, the rate is significantly lower than ever so, so we anticipate another low rate, not as low as the current rate, but, but pretty close, so we'll see how that pans out. And we're preparing for town meeting, as you heard, so we're finalizing the operating and capital budgets, we're drafting the town meeting warrant, we're also preparing the next round of ARPA funding to present to the FinCom, the Capital Planning Committee, and the Select Board, we hope to do that sometime in June for the board to make some decisions on that. And that is all I have.
Great. Old business?
Bliss Corner, no new updates, although I will have the board, the final EPA request for access agreement for the old police station site on the next agenda for the board to vote on and approve, it's been vetted by Arc Environmental Council and, as well as health in my office, so we'll be presenting that. Lake Nokochuk, no new updates, municipal broadband, you heard the update on the, at that. The Title V amendments, we have not heard anything, so no new updates on that. And the CSO New Bedford, we have not heard on finalizing dates for that meeting, it's still going back and forth, trying to coordinate schedules of the members who are attending, so.
So it's not tomorrow at 3:00?
No.
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 Okay, I'll have to cross, all right, I'll have to cross that off my list.
So it's very tough to coordinate the schedules, DEP is working hard to do that, so we'll continue to follow up.
It's not DEP this time, it's you-know-who.
New Bedford has not responded to attend, so we've asked multiple times, so it's just gonna be Dartmouth and Mass DEP.
Beautiful.
And that's all I have.
Scoundrels.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve?
No minutes.
Any comments from the select board members?
Yes, I do.
Mr. McDonald?
Can we get an update from the DPW as to their progress in the sidewalks? I guess surveying and where they're going to be, or as far as sidewalks that need to be removed, repaired, or replaced?
Well, if you remember.
Different areas?
The, the decision by the DPW was to, was to not, not replace the sidewalks.
So the question is, is that if there is a development out there that wants to remove the sidewalks, what is the process of getting it done? And how are they gonna be able to go on to the town easement to get them done? Because it is on the town easement.
Correct.
So there's gonna have to be some type of legal, legal paperwork done to get it done, and who's going to be responsible?
They'd also decided to not take the trees down, that's the reason.
Right.
And they were, where they take the sidewalk out, they propose to plant grass.
Correct.
So there'd be no sidewalk.
So the question is, is that if, if, if that's the case, is it the DPW that's going to do it? Or what if there is a development that wants to do it, and?
You mean on the, independently?
Independently, and whatnot.
I can ask the DPW to come in on the 24th, to give an update on sidewalks? Sure.
And there are a lot of people, not a lot, but I get a few emails of existing areas.
Right, and, but there's also, I'm getting emails from people from, who have sidewalks, who wanna get rid of it, because the sidewalks are, the trees that were planted were probably the incorrect trees, which the roots have created, created ruts and, and tripping hazards on the sidewalks. But then again, I also get emails from people saying that they want the sidewalks repaired, because they feel safer walking on the sidewalks instead of on the street. So, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a asphalt conundrum.
But it's gonna be one or the other, I don't believe we're gonna have choices.
Right.
May I ask Mr. McDonald? Mr. Mickelson?
No.
Mr. Gracie?
No, I'm good.
Comments? Ms. Brooks?
I have a list. So when we, when I came on the board last year, one of the first things we did is we reviewed the code of conduct, and we said that we would do that annually, and although the faces have not changed on the board, I think we, as the headboard, need to do the right thing. So if we could do that at the next meeting, that would be great.
Okay.
Next, I just want to mention that between our last meeting and this meeting, some of us attended a meeting of the DOT in this room, where they talked about the proposed changes to Route 6. And I didn't know if it would be of any value, if the board was like-minded, to send something to the DOT. I individually am not happy with the proposal that they presented. that they presented, and I don't feel that it was well-vetted by them. Several speakers that night brought up concerns, and it seemed to me that the members of the presentation group were, had aha moments, which to me, they should have already thought of. So, I'm not sure if that's something that anyone on the board would like to comment on as well.
Well, I mean, one of the biggest, one of the biggest...
Are we able to discuss this now? Or we need to...
Yeah, we can discuss. It's part of, we brought it up as far as, you know...
Well, it was an open meeting, so...
Right, it's an open meeting, which, I mean, as far as, as far as the aha moment, number one, was the suggestion by the safety officer, Officer Canario, about that ridiculous second right-hand lane going west, where, you know, it's, it's basically a long entrance to the mall, or it's, I'm gonna use this lane so I can beat the traffic down Route Six, because I'm not gonna stand in line on the regular right or the left-hand lane.
And I'm also concerned about the double U-turns of the folks that need to, that live on Champion, Champion Terrace.
I mean, there's many, many inadequacies in this. It's, it's the U-turn, you know, from people coming out of Tucker Road to go home to Championship Terrace, and people leaving Championship Terrace to go to New Bedford, or going to Stang, or going down Slocum Road, where they're gonna have to do another U-turn. It's, and, but the biggest thing that I have was the statement made by the state that they discussed this plan with the town, and that the town was okay with it. This plan never came before this board. This board did not approve or even discuss this. We were told this is what it was gonna be, because they didn't wanna pay for the land-taking. And there has been confirmation by one of our members, two former town administrators, that this was also never discussed. So, we know now that basically they stood here and lied to cover themselves.
How did that happen?
So, I mean, that's just, you know, I don't, I don't agree, I don't agree with the plan. I don't, I, it's an inadequate plan. And, you know, somebody, if somebody purchases that corner, Tucker Road and Route Six, and does something there, it's gonna throw this plan out of whack. And when New Bedford decides to make this municipal industrial, limited industrial plan on the golf course, and people are gonna shoot down the mall area, it's gonna create a problem on Hathaway Road, where they're only gonna have two entrances, two lanes, or three lanes. I don't even know if they had three lanes. I think I only saw two.
Two lanes.
You know, right, a right turn and a left turn. That right turn is going to be, you know, back up all the way to the, you know...
Repose Park.
Right, yeah. It could be backed up to Riccotti's, as far as we're known.
I'm just concerned that the, the plan that we saw does not address the issues that we, as a town, feel that we have with Route Six. And it's going to be two years, is what they said, of construction. And in the end, we're, I don't, personally, I don't feel we're gonna be any better off.
Can I just say something? So, it was I that called David Kressman, and he reassured me, as Sean and myself had talked about it earlier, that we were on the board at the time, never did that happen. And I called David Hickox also, and he assured me the same thing. With, he sent letters upon letters upon letters that were never, never, ever, ever returned with any statement at all from the DOT. This is a, because of, this is what I'm thinking. They're, they're claiming they don't have enough money. My comment was, the state is flush with money, flush with more money than they've ever had in their lives, ever. Number two, it's a regional issue now. Because it's a regional issue, I'm using the new park that the city of New Bedford is gonna build, so that becomes a regional issue now. So, therefore, the state is responsible to pay for the land-taking, period. And one more thing, the DOT did the town a terrible disservice.
I would, I would like to, I listened to the, all the comments, the people there, I was not in town at the time, but it seems to me the ultimate question really is, assuming they do all the wrinkles and changes resulting from that meeting, and they have this plan, which we're saying doesn't work anyway, assuming they're happy with the plan and did this and that, and right turns or whatever, how is that gonna compare, that if we had the Tucker Road extension done, in terms of safety and traffic flow, et cetera? And my guess is that it won't compare still. It'll still be completely inadequate. Without that Tucker extension, why are we spending two years, and their $2 million, on a project that is not gonna help? And I wanna hear from them to tell us the comparative...
Well, they claimed it will help. You heard them.
No, no, in comparison to the extension being done.
They have enough money. They can make this a regional. If we propose the letter that way, they, they assume, if they agree that it's a regional issue, then they need to, they need to pony up and pay that extra money, and do the whole project as it was originally proposed.
I mean, as I started off my comments, my very first question that I had written down that I was going to ask is, how many people who have designed and looked at this road actually live in this town? But it was clearly evident that none of them did. So, they don't know. They can, yeah, they can sit there and watch traffic for a half hour, an hour, at different times of the day, or, you know, different times of the month and whatnot, and can come up with a nice plan, but they don't live here. They don't drive it. They don't see it.
I think they said we have $2 million to spend. I don't care how you spend it, make a plan, because that's what it looks like.
And plus the fact that if they were going with this, you know, I'll be honest with you, if, if they had told us when this first came out, that the town would be responsible for the land-taking, I know that either town administrator that, you know, between Mr. Kressman and Mr. McInnis, would have developed a stabilization fund to get, to put sock-away money every year to do this.
$225,000 a year, whatever, and have the money for it.
We would've had the money for this.
I, my attitude is that I want their assessment to tell us that without the Tucker extension, this thing is almost a joke, comparing the, the safety and flow versus what it would be that way. If that's the case, don't do it. Don't do anything.
Well, look at the safety again. The safety issue alone for the, for the police department. That's my other point.
Well, having the safety officer have his concerns, having the fire chief of District Three, which would be impacted, have his concerns.
Okay. Mr. McInnis, what's your attitude? Your opinion?
Well, from the meeting, it sounded like, you know, Mast Dot was pretty set on this alternative, and they're moving forward with it. You know, we can certainly ask them to revisit. We did, when, you know, we had a meeting, I don't know, well over a year ago with Mast Dot and DPW, where they presented this alternative. We were not in favor of it. And we asked them if they would go back to the original design. They said, if the town funds the taking, they can go back to their original design. It would also push the project out another three to five years. So, their, their view was, at the time, they'll be ready for construction in two years, which is now coming up next year with this project. They wanted to move forward with that, but also leaving the option of the town to fund the relocation of Tucker Road in the future to tie into their project. So, we had many conversations about that, but they were...
That will never happen. That's a bunch of baloney. Baloney. I'd use another word, baloney. Kosher baloney.
Okay. I think, I think we're on the same track here. What do we do?
We send a letter, and, and basically tell them what, what we've decided.
Oh, I mean, one thing, you know, when we had this conversation, this meeting internally with Mast Dot, we talked, well, you know, what are our options here? The options were, you know, the town could seek to fund the taking and then push the project out. Or if, you know, Mast Dot wants to move forward with this alternative, one outlook was, well, if they do something, they will have some improvement on the area. Their, Mast Dot's funding the whole thing, the town can still come back in the future and do the relocation, but it would provide some sort of addressing the need sooner rather than later, so...
That's the other thing that I don't understand, okay? Is they're saying, they're saying that if the town wants to go ahead with the Tucker Road relocation, then the project has to be put out three years. Okay. Understand, why?
They already have that.
Because they already have, they already doing what they're supposed to do. They just said, well, you know, if we do this, then the town can come back and do the road later. Well, okay, if the town can come back and do the road later, then what is needed that has to, that can't be added to what's going on in the next year? I, I don't quite understand that.
Talk to both sides of their mouth.
Well, they already have the plan for the Tucker Road extension, so they, it's not like they're gonna start all over.
Right. I mean, it's there. I mean, if the town does it on its own, then really what it is, is just, basically, it's a set of lights. It's a, it's adding a set of lights, a reconfiguring of satellites. That's it.
Taking your land.
Which they could, they could do now.
But, but the thing is, is that this is all, this is all, the land-taking...
DOT's issue is, it's not any more work.
Right. They're saying that.
I got a suggestion here. They say they're gonna go back and do all, take into consideration all, and do all kinds of work, and come back to us with another modified plan. What if we contact them right away and say, we need to have you, you and you come down and sit with us, select board, first, before they do this wonderful work, and tell them what the town, what our position is, and then we can make a decision? Because I think what we were doing is, well, we got, they're gonna do it for free, let's see what it looks like. Well, it's not too impressive.
I mean, and there was questions asked that, you know, they said they had information in slides, but they didn't have it with them that night.
And this guy was adamant. He said he had a doctorate degree in, in transportation.
Well, to me, it looked like just a check box. To get this project done, they had to present it to, at an open meeting. Check, they did. They provided the folks who were here, which was about 35 residents, with a form that they could send in within 10 days, which, if you do 10 business days, that gives them until this Wednesday, April 12th. What are they gonna do with these comments?
We've seen, we've seen this playbook before. This is the DEP playbook.
They did that in the north.
They're all stated.
This is, this is the state playbook on, on public participation.
But I think we go on record by saying we're, we're dissatisfied with the plan and feel like...
Could we say we're on record with dissatisfied? We'd like to request a meeting with XYZ officials from DOT to meet with the select board.
Pronto.
I'll contact them to see when they're available.
Even if it's a Zoom meeting, but, because it's, make, make it so. Does that have to be a public meeting?
Yeah, if the select board is present, yes.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Yeah, if there's three of us, it's gotta be public. And posted.
And, I mean, Tim Barber was there that night, but to have DEP, I mean, DPW, Police Department?
I was surprised that Tim didn't say anything.
Okay.
All right, so that was one. My, my next one is, I understand that there's still, for the waterways and the parks and rec, an MOU is needed between the two groups in order to pursue the next phase of a grant that they received?
CPC.
CPC has requested that?
CPC provided them funding contingent on them coming to an agreement, an MOU on the use of the whole landing.
And they haven't?
No.
The two groups have not. Would it be worthwhile to bring the two groups together? Or to create an MOU taken, taking a little bit of what each of them want?
If that does not get resolved, this grant may die.
I mean, we can ask to have the park and rec director and the harbor master come in to discuss the MOU, I think. They know they've been working on it together in some capacity, so they can update you on where they're at with that.
And it was requested by CPC?
Yeah. Ultimately, with, the park board is elected, they vote on that, their portion of the MOU. The harbor master, with the support of waterways, develops their, their portion of the MOU, but the select board ultimately has to vote for that.
So, we really just need Mr. Mello and Mr. Lancaster.
Correct.
Okay, good. Sounds good.
Great. And then I do wanna remind everyone that the DEF spelling bee is this Wednesday, 7:00 PM. We will have a team, although our third member is still questionable. So, that's 7 to 9 at Dartmouth High School. I also know that a member of the tree committee had asked to come in front of us to give a report, so if you could put them on a future agenda.
I've talked to her directly, and I think we, no need to see, have her come for us.
Oh, we don't, okay. And then between last, our last meeting and this meeting, there was yet another school shooting, as well as several general shootings. And I just wanna take a moment of our time to say that we are lucky, that there hasn't been anything in our community, that we need to care for each other and think of everyone's mental health and well-being, but we really need to thank our lucky stars every day, the crazy things that are going on and, and at meetings, and just everywhere we go. Keep your senses about, about you.
Be aware of where you are all the time.
Yeah.
Very appropriate remark.
And that's all I have.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess I'm looking for, are we done?
Second.
Second. Okay, we need to vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. This meeting is officially adjourned.